Oh, I see what you're saying. Sure, sure. Well, if... Um, I actually have a little... I don't know where she is. Um, or second. I will.
Is men? All women.
This one?
Chairs are all scrambled up.
Full of education meetings hereby convene. We are, we were given Commissioner Ladd in a second to get here, but she must be somewhere. Would everyone please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance? Commissioner Van White will lead us. A moment of silence and the Pledge of Allegiance. Commissioner White?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the meeting held December 21, 2006. You have all received copies of these minutes. Is there a motion to approve those?
In January 2.
In January 2. Yes, thank you.
So move.
Second.
As we moved on second, I'd like to make a modification to the December 21, 2006 minutes in the Standing Committee Report section. The section that dealt with the audit report. There was a resolution. There was a resolution regarding the CAFR and, and we would like to basically amend the minutes to say the following. The other sort of motion to accept adoption of a comprehensive annual financial report, CAFR, based on the unqualified opinion of Deloitte and Tush LLP, the CAFR auditor. The reason that we want to say that is because that is the case. So what is changing in the minutes is are the words "based on the unqualified opinion of Deloitte and Tush LLP", the CAFR auditor. Will you please make those corrections? Thank you. Any other corrections to those minutes? All of those in favor of passing the minutes at sense with the, the minutes of December 21 with the correction, please say aye.
Aye.
Commissioner, Mr. Evans?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. The minutes passed 7-0 and including Mr. Evans' vote. Thank you. The next is, we're going to listen to speakers addressing an agenda item and we have several. I'd like to remind the speakers that they have three minutes to make their presentation and I'm going to try to enforce those three minutes. So I would appreciate if you please, when you listen to the sound that the time watch makes, conclude your remarks and we'll move on to the next speaker. We have a very heavy agenda and we have a lot of speakers and definitely we want to get through both as soon as possible. I'm going to call the first three speakers. Excuse me. First one is James Bowens and then after Mr. Bowen is Jesus Rodriguez and Sue Passino. Please come up.
Thank you, members of the, thank you, Dr. Rivera and members of the board and community members. My name is James Bowens from Charlotte High School and I am here to speak about athletic eligibility. Last year, there's, I have been here, been in Charlotte for two years. Last year I came to Charlotte bad, grades not good, but I wanted to play basketball, but I couldn't because I didn't have a 2.0. This, the beginning of this year, I came in the first day and said that I was going to play basketball. So I got my grades up, got a 2.0 and I've been eligible ever since. I feel like if you lower the grades, if you lower the standards for the athletic, you're pretty much saying that athletics is more important than grades. I mean, college is going to look at grades too, not just if you can play football or basketball or any other sport. And I'm against the, against the law. That's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker, please.
Thank you, Dr. Rivera, members of the board and community members. My name is Jesus Rodriguez. I am from Charlotte High School and I'm here to speak about the current athletic eligibility policy. Due to this policy and the high standards, I have been able to keep my grades up because I want to play sports. I see that, um, I haven't this standard, that such a high standard that I use sports as a motivation to keep, to keep me going to school, to keep my grades up because I want to be able to play sports and do, in order for me to play sports, I have to keep my grades up. This has also gave me, sports and this high standard has also gave me an opportunity to seek into colleges and to, um, just have another attitude towards school and grades. Our grades currently right now are very good due to this policy and I, I think that by lowering the policy, students are just not going to care about grades, they're just going to care about playing a sport and that's, that's not being a responsible student because grades comes first, then comes the sports. And in order to play a sport, you need to have grades. So that's what I have to say today. Good night. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Passino?
Good evening and thank you for allowing me to speak. My name is Sue Passino and I'm the Athletic Director at Nathaniel Rochester Community School. I would like to talk about the proposed change to the current athletic eligibility policy. The current policy is very clear, concise and fair. Students are being held accountable for their education by having to maintain a C or 2.0 GPA in order to participate in our, in our athletics. Students are placed on probation if they have one F in any subject. Students are required to pull these grades up by attending mandatory study halls and are given the remainder of the marking period to do this. If a student receives two Fs in any marking period, they are ineligible to participate in games but may continue to practice with the team until the next grade report, at which time they must have passing grades and no more than two Fs. In the proposed policy, there are really no timelines. A student could be declared on probation in September and remain on probation until June. Where is the incentive for the student to get those grades up? How will students failing graduate? And one success of this policy is I had a former student in seventh grade who in seventh grade was declared ineligible. He is now a junior in high school. He has not been ineligible since that seventh grade and his current GPA is close to a 3.0. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speakers would be Mr. Tim Wagner, Ms. Vicky Govia and Catherine Bauton.
Members, members of the board and Mr. Looby. Good evening. My name is Tim Wagner, former principal, district employee for 35 years and city resident for the past 23 years. I'm here tonight representing administrators regarding the proposed changes to the eligibility, eligibility policy 5305. As an administrator, or more specifically, as someone who represents administrators, I first became aware of the proposed changes to this policy by attending last month's board meeting where I found that the proposal was being taken, taken out of committee and being brought to the full board. That concerned me. My first question was, why would the committee do that? My second concern was, why wouldn't the board send it right back to the committee to complete its charge? If I remember correctly, it was stated that the purpose of changing the current policy was to help reduce the dropout rate. Rest assured, there is absolutely no issue with this goal. As a matter of fact, we applaud efforts to reduce dropout rates and improve graduation rates. What is at issue is whether the proposed changes give us the desired outcome and whether these changes can be clearly communicated to students and staff and whether these changes can be implemented with consistency throughout the district. My colleagues at the secondary level, as well as my own experience, tell me that it fails on all three of these areas. The proposed changes are not clear, they're open to interpretation. Therefore, communicating it clearly to students, staff and parents would be virtually impossible. The proposed, the proposed changes make reference in one section to core subjects, then in a later section to scheduled subjects. Included is a ref, is a reference to sufficient academic progress. What pray tell is the definition of sufficient? And please don't tell me that it's adequate. Do you see the confusion? This policy is being rushed by advocates. Rushed, I believe, out of passion. Advocates help get things done. We need advocates. They are essential. However, let us recognize that advocates are often blinded by their own passion. They sometimes fail to see the devil in the detail because they are focused on the big picture. That is why a policy change must go before the seven board members for a detailed review, to take the necessary time to assist advocates and challenge advocates to flesh out sound policy. In theory and hopefully in practice, the collective wisdom of seven individuals ensures that all policies passed by the board are ones that are easily communicated to students and staff, are ones that can be implemented with consistency and ones that result in the desired outcomes. As a representative of the people who must implement the policies created and passed by you, I ask that you either vote no to the proposed changes or vote to send the proposal back to the policy committee. I'm sure the policy committee, after hearing feedback tonight, would appreciate the opportunity to address the concerns raised. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wagner. Vicky?
Members of the board and Mr. Looby. My name is Vicky Govia and I've been a district employee for 32 years, most recently serving as an elementary principal at schools 57, 12 and 45. The issue of academic eligibility was initially one very foreign to me as it would be to most elementary school principals. But in my role as president of ASAR, it's one with which I've had to become very familiar in a short period of time. I would also like to point out that in nearly my, my four years as president, this is one of only a few times that I've come before you to ask for your consideration about the proposed changes to a board policy. I'd like to make a few points about the process that has brought us to this point this evening. First, ASAR fully supports the efforts of the board to examine whatever is in existence and to do whatever it takes to reduce the large number of students who fail to complete high school in this district. The current academic eligibility policy is a good policy. It has effectively set high standards for all students participating in extracurricular activities to achieve. The current academic eligibility policy recognizes the role and influence that participation in athletics and other activities plays in the lives of our students and we applaud your efforts to use this influence to keep students involved and supported. The current policy provides a level of support and encouragement to those students, especially in athletics, who may not currently meet our standards for participation but would like the opportunity to be supported in their efforts to correct any deficiencies so that they can participate. I think you understand my point. ASAR members have done research which shows that the Rochester City School District has one of the, if not, the highest standards for eligibility under our current policy for participation in athletics and is recognized as such throughout the region. I ask you tonight not to engage in any throwing out the baby with the bathwater behavior by changing a policy that currently works, but to work with us in allowing the administration to propose administrative regulations that would implement the current policy in a way that is not only fair and equitable, but also supportive of the efforts of our young people in order to be successful. I commit to you tonight that ASAR stands ready to provide you the input and support and assistance to change the implementation of the policy so it meets the goals that you desire and most importantly, are supportive of our students. We can do so in a timeframe that's reasonable, can provide for, provide for wide-scale input and can be supported by the community. I ask you tonight to accept our offer for assistance and to defer any changes to this policy. We can make this successful policy work even better and the end result will be exactly what you're looking for. Thank you for your consideration of my remarks.
Thank you, Ms. Govia. Catherine Bauton?
Good evening, board. I am Kathy Bauton, Coordinator of Health, Physical Education and Athletics at Monroe High School and I have been doing this position for 13 years. I'm here to address the eligibility policy. We all agree that we want to promote and support academic success that leads to student graduation and lifelong success. Are you aware that we presently have a policy? It's been in place for three years. It is a policy that supports academic success. Students know what GPA and what grades they need to be able to, to participate. They also know what they have to do if they are on academic probation or ineligible. It's a policy that is easy to explain to students, parents, teachers or anyone that may be interested. There are no gray areas that leads to anyone having their own interpretation. Students do not have to, students do have to attend a study hall and receive extra help if they are on probation or ineligible. There is also an appeal process in place if they choose to take that route. With the po, the proposed policy, I have several questions. The policy talks about having to maintain a 2.0 GPA for all scheduled classes. But later on, it speaks to having students put on, put on probation if they did not have a C in their core subjects, English, math, science, social studies and foreign language. Are we suggesting to students that the other classes they are taking do not matter? It's not important to have a C average in all your classes? You are, you are aware, as am I, that colleges look at all their subjects, not just math, English, science, social studies and foreign language. Let's prepare our students and have them meet the level that is needed to go on to college. This policy never mentions ineligible students. Is a student, is a student always eligible or always on probation? What about a student that may have several Fs? Is that student on probation or ineligible? What does ineligible mean? It's not mentioned in the policy. Is a student always allowed to play? When are the progress reports done? If you're on probation, shouldn't you have to keep all your grades up? Not just the ones you're failing? Do we raise some and let others fall? How do we explain this policy to students, parents, teachers or anyone that's concerned? Did anyone look at the present policy that's in place or ask any of the ADs how the policy is working? We don't receive calls from parents arguing about whether a child is eligible or not. They understand the policy. Students understand that grades come first. My kids said to me, we need to have a goal where kids will think it doesn't matter what their grades are. Many of my athletes said, we have to go to college after high school. As a district, we're holding our students to higher standards. Let's not drop the ball here. Let's work together. If the board thinks the policy has to be changed from what we currently have, let's sit down together and work out the problems. Not one AD was asked for the input, advice or suggestions. I do not believe any of the principals were asked either. If we really want to put students first, we need to work together as adults and I don't see this happening right now. Let's sit down together, get input from all the people involved.
Please conclude.
Yes, and come up with a solution that is best for our students. The ADs are here to work in the best interests of our students. You know where we are every day. You know where we are every day. Please call us, we'd love to work with you. And to the board member that sent us an email this afternoon, in my opinion, that email was in bad taste. It was insulting, condescending, and had lots of false information. Yes, Mr. Brennan, it was true.
Thank you. Joe LaPrieta, Chris Connell, and Mike Burns.
Good evening, I'm Mike Burns, I guess the other two are not here tonight.
Thank you.
My name is Mike Burns, I'm the Athletic Director at Jefferson High School. This is my 20th year in the district and 18th year at Jefferson. During that time, I've served as a physical education teacher, a coach, and a mentor to our new teachers. I again am also speaking on the proposed academic eligibility policy. After reading through the proposal that is before you, it is clear that we are all on the same page. That trying to make sure that every child has every opportunity to participate and succeed, both in the classroom and on the field or on the court. With that said, I would encourage you to again look at what is already happening and doesn't need to be changed to a great deal. The current policy, it is written right now, is clear. Students, parents, coaches, teachers, and administrators know what it takes to be able to participate in extracurricular activities and sports. The policy is easy to explain to all involved, it's easy to administer, and most of all, it is fair. Over the past six years as Athletic Director at Jefferson, I have had literally no complaints from parents or students about the fairness of the current policy. During our preseason parent meetings, team meetings, coaches' meetings, and throughout the season, we remind our student athletes of the district's expectations in the classroom and in competition. From my point of view, the strength of the current policy is its clarity and its functionality. It works. Everyone knows exactly what it means to be fully eligible, to be eligible on probation, and what it means to be ineligible. It provides tutoring for those that need it. It also provides a process for those students who have fallen short of the benchmark, but because of circumstances that are out of their control allows them to participate as well, the appeals process. For those that have become ineligible because of too many Fs or low GPA, the current policy is pushing them to perform in the classroom, and I think that's what we all want. Right now, we at Jefferson have two student athletes who more than likely will return from being ineligible to action at the end of this marking period because they have fixed their grades under the current policy. One student had no Fs in the first marking period, but then had three in the second. Another failed math two times in a row. Both just this week brought me written notes from all their teachers that they were now passing all of their subjects. They can't wait to begin competing again, but most of all, they are now successful in the classroom. While no policy is perfect, including the current one, and can be tweaked here and there to make it even better, the current policy is clearly working. It is clear, and it is fair. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir, for keeping to your time. Mr. Joe Baldino and David Micherson.
Members of the board, Dr. Rivera, community members, and colleagues. My name is Joe Baldino, I'm representing the Secondary Principals Council of the Rochester City School District. I'm a 27-year veteran of the district, 19 of those years I spent coaching various sports. I'm going to start from a basic premise, one that I think we all share. We care deeply for our students, we spend countless hours trying to make sure they're successful, and we work in service to our students. We feel the proposed policy will have a negative effect on the academic achievement of our students. There are no specific requirements that a student must maintain a C average in order to participate in athletics or extracurricular activities. The policy that we have now does have those requirements. We have students in record numbers working to reach that level. The collective GPAs of our team are rising every year, they're at record levels. We have teams trying to compete with one another for the highest GPA overall. I've seen students work out contracts with teachers. The individual student is being cared for, they're advocating for themselves, they're developing leadership skills, they work with teachers to put together a contract of studying and tutoring to keep up their averages. Our present policy is held up to a standard outside the City School District. I've talked to principals, they keep mentioning our policy and they fight over how they can raise their standards to come up to ours. This is developing a sense of pride in our students and staff. When our athletes walk into a gym or on a football field, the athletes from the other districts, they know that our kids have a high standard, and those kids are real student athletes. Our other concern is that beginning with the year 2008, the student athlete will need to pass 16 core subjects with a C or better in order to get a Division I or II scholarship. This policy may make it difficult for those students to achieve that level. I know a concern has been raised, the present eligibility policy may lead students to drop out of school because they're not able to play sports or participate in extracurricular activities due to the difficulty of meeting these requirements. A student still may appeal to his or her principal and ask that she or he be allowed to participate due to extenuating circumstances. We do care for the individual student and what they may have coming across them that will preclude them from participating in sports. If we decrease the standard of the eligibility policy to deal with the dropout issue, we may increase participation, but because there's not a strong requirement that a student maintains a C average to participate, there's a very good chance that with more students failed classes, they might have passed under the present policy. When their four-year eligibility runs out, they may still drop out of school because they have not met the requirements for a diploma. They certainly will not meet, we feel, the requirement of passing 16 core subjects that's required for Division I or II scholarships. We have five of our students who've been duly noted and recognized this past school year in girls' basketball alone, I believe, who have made Division I scholarships. We feel that any policy can be looked at. We do feel that our students are important, and we do feel that there could be some things improved. But we humbly request that you put this on hold, get some more input, and then hopefully we'll be able to put together another policy. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Most of my points have already been addressed, but I'm going to go over them anyway. My name is Dave Michelson, I'm the Athletic Director at School of the Arts, and I'm here to speak about the proposed changes to the eligibility policy. Although we agree with your goal about keeping students in school and emphasizing academics, we don't agree with the proposed changes. Our current policy is working. I very rarely do I receive any calls or questions from parents or students because this policy is easy to interpret. It's clear, there's no gray area, it's very concise. Parents and students know that everything is based on those final marking period reports. If we go back in time to progress reports or runaround sheets, we are determining eligibility with an unofficial document that is open to errors, questions, and scrutiny. It also places an increase on workload for teachers to keep track of the runaround sheets. I currently have a basketball player at School of the Arts who is currently ineligible this marking period. He currently received two Fs, and that was probably due to a case of senioritis. However, he's also going to Canisius next year on a full basketball scholarship. The past few weeks has served as a wake-up call to him. His teachers have noticed a big improvement in his overall behavior and in his classwork. He spends many of his free periods now in the library because he knows that he's got to get his act together. Under the new policy with a two-week progress report, there may not be this sense of urgency to get his act together. We would appreciate an opportunity to sit down with board members and other parties involved to come up with a policy that we could all live with and is easy to implement. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Micherson. I'm sorry for mispronouncing your name. I'm going to give board members an opportunity to make a brief comment, and I'm going to start with Mr. Evans at my right.
The student leadership congress met yesterday and spoke briefly regarding the athletic eligibility policy. We of the council feel that we should keep the policy as it is, but modify it to include more support for our athletes, not meeting the current requirement set down by the current policy. Firsthand, we have seen student athletes flourish under the current policy. This fall, we witnessed the Marshall Juris football team make it to the corner finals of state competition. The Juris played with the same roster all season from August to October. They showed it is possible to follow the district's eligibility policy and still be competitive in sectional and state competition. So we ask as a council to keep the current policy but include more support for our athletes. Thank you.
Commissioner Brennan?
This will be an agenda item later in the agenda, will it not?
Yes.
I can wait until we get to that point.
Commissioner Elliott?
I am very much in favor of this policy. Let me just put that right on the table, and I'm going to do what I can to make sure it gets supported. And let me tell you why I think it's important that it is done. As you know, I'm very much in favor of us doing whatever we can do to keep our children in school. It appears to me that we have a culture here that is either-or. If they don't do it this way, then kick them out. Well, that's not the way the world is working in the future. The world has multiple options of which we are operating by. We at the district have to make sure that we are also using the same kind of futuristic paradigm, or these children are dead. It is not either-or. Workplace environments are now saying not to do it either-or. Whatever that they can do in order to accommodate the employee is what the future of the workplace is being, because it's a different time. We're living under this 1950s model, but let me tell you, it's not working anymore. And if we don't change the way we do business here in education, in our education policy, then we have did our children a disservice. If it takes our kids, if the kids are coming to school because of sports, remember, these are kids. Remember, these are kids who are urban kids who primarily know about sports. That's what they're good at. Why can't we take that sports model and use that academically? Could it be that we as professionals don't want to do it or can't do it? Maybe we're not the right ones to be in position in order to get that accomplished. I submit to you, and here's where I come from, if we tell them they can't be in school, that they can't play sports, all right? If we don't put those social services around them where we can do it, then they're going to be in jail, because already they're feeling hopeless about being in this district. And what I understand, because I went into the jails and talked to students, they've said to me that the teachers or whoever the person is who signs off on dropping out of school, that they're too willing to drop out. We've got to look at different ways of how do we motivate our children? And if participating in sports will help that to happen and will give us an opportunity to engage them in academics, let's try to do that. Let's not try to keep them out, let's try to keep all of our students, whatever way it takes to keep them in, and give them the academics. I've said this before, at Baden Street, we have a huge sports program that becomes just a carrot. Academics is what we focus in on, and when we have our sports banquet, the academic trophy is the biggest trophy that our kids get. So let's try to broaden our thinking that it cannot be either-or. Let's find, there are different learning styles. We have to consider that it can't just be one learning style. Please, let's consider. So I'm in favor of this, but as Commissioner Evans said at the last board meeting, we certainly are in favor of the standards. And that's what we want to make sure, that there is the support services around these kids to give them the stance. We want all of these children to be productive members of society. I will submit to you, and I'm finished, President Garcia, I will submit to you, let's not have another case where in a Rondicourt family or another family is kidnapped and put in the car. The next family may not be too lucky. So let's do all we can as district employees, as members of this entity, to educate our children, not to destroy them. Thank you, President Garcia.
Commissioner Evans? Commissioner Power?
I will also save my comments.
Commissioner Thompson?
Thank you.
Commissioner White?
I just want to address the proposal very quickly while the comments of the speakers are before this body. The first thing that I want to say is that it's a matter of public record that we have a graduation rate in this district that hovers around 52%. As I've said repeatedly, and I'll continue to say it, that's unacceptable. We also know that we have one of the highest dropout rates in this district per capita in the state, one of the highest dropout rates per capita in this state. That's also unacceptable to everybody up here, and I assume even the people that spoke out against this particular proposal. And in reviewing your comments, much was said about how this particular policy lowers the standards. I don't see that, this policy, that way. I don't see this policy change that way. I actually see this policy change as raising the standards for the district. Because there is much said in this policy about supportive services. The present policy doesn't dictate or doesn't suggest what we're going to do to support these students in their mission to stay in schools. So I think, you know, folks are saying, "Well, what's going to happen to the C average?" As I understand it, unless I'm mistaken, no one's doing away with the C requirement. People keep on saying that, that's not true. You need to understand, particularly in an educational setting, you need to understand what's before you, and I think I do. A C is required. People keep on saying, "What's going to happen to the C requirement?" Quite frankly, I'm not impressed with the C requirement. We got to actually raise that standard someday. But this policy, this recommendation, does not get rid of the C requirement. Additionally, I think it is wise that this policy keeps in place the 93% attendance requirement, does it not? So nothing changes in that regard. Please, understand before you criticize. The C requirement is still going to stay there, as is the 93%. Again, I want to suggest to you all that this is not about lowering the standards for our students. 93% attendance rate is still there, the C requirement is still there. This is about raising the bar for the district, requiring that if we're going to say to students, "You're going to be educated here, we're going to make sure, and give you the supportive services that you need." This policy provides the teeth to that mission.
Dr. Rivera?
Thank you. First of all, I would like to acknowledge a lot of the success that we have had with the implementation of our current policy. I'm well aware, and at the time that the Marshall players were here and we were recognizing them, just going through their GPAs and the success that they've had in school is just tremendous. And it's a very good friend of mine by the name of Archie Curry, who many years ago actually led this effort. And Archie was one who stood for high standards for all of our kids. And I would not want to be one to support a policy if it violated his commitment or any of our commitment to high standards. There is something that is, it is clear to me from listening to a few members, I apologize for getting here late, I was returning from Albany, but there is clearly some confusion, and I do think that it would be very helpful for myself, Mr. Zworline, Mr. Robinson, to convene a meeting with the Athletic Directors to review the regulation that is being advanced to the board, not the policy. The policy remains intact, but is being advanced is a regulation. The regulation, I will tell you, because I worked on it, actually does address a lot of the concerns, or all of the concerns, that the first speaker, I can't recall her name, was describing when I first walked in. She talked about the importance of maintaining standards, a 2.0, and maintaining high academic standards. My concern that I expressed publicly at the last board meeting was that the earlier draft did not address that. And that under the earlier draft, we could have found ourselves in a situation where a student could have maintained a 2.0, yet would have been failing a core course and might not have graduated, and that was unacceptable. So this regulation addresses that. There was a second concern that I expressed, and it was the concern about students going weekly with a runaround sheet. And we believe that with the technology and the reporting and creating a concise format, that that could be addressed as well. And Maurice Evans, our student here, he shared a couple of things. He said, "Maintaining high standards but wanting more support for students," and this regulation addresses that as well. And it does also, you know, speak to times when students are not eligible. So I would like to, I support this regulation that's being advanced to the board tonight. That is why I have recommended it to the board. Secondly, I think it would be very helpful for us to convene a meeting to go through it. There are questions, we should discuss it. And if there are guidelines that could be developed that would more clearly address some of the areas that may seem ambiguous or may not be clear enough that need to be clear, I have the authority as a superintendent of schools to develop those guidelines for those regulations. So let's move in that direction, and I hope that together we can advance a policy that strengthens this direction and helps our young people. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Rivera, and you may continue with your superintendent's report.
I don't know if this is a joke, why someone left his lightbulb up here, but I'll...
You're enlightening.
Just, I'm very encouraged. I came, just drove to Albany this morning and drove back this afternoon. I did not want to miss a board meeting. I have not missed one in four and a half years. But I will tell you that I was very encouraged by the governor's response towards the campaign for fiscal equity funding. And I'm very hopeful that the big cities, especially cities like Rochester that have the greatest need, will come out ahead this year. I'm very encouraged by what I've been hearing. And as, of course, as the public knows, it's only probably eight short weeks away when I will be advancing to you a recommended budget for the '07-'08 school year. On a positive note, I would just like to recognize the fact that we have five more teachers in our district. We now have a total of 28, who are being recognized among the top educators in the country. They recently earned National Board certification. And I don't know if they're here tonight, but if you are, raise your hand. But I'm gonna recognize you, because this is being televised. So if you're at home, you can see this as well. Heather Belanger, English Language Arts Specialist at School 23. Kieta Davis, a grade five teacher at Flower City number 54 school. Roxanne Giffaldi, a reading first teacher at School number 8. Juan Melendez, a phys ed teacher at School 25. And Lynn O'Brien, a special ed teacher at Franklin in the International Finance School. Last, yesterday, there was a press conference at Bryan and Stratton College. As you know, and even two weeks before that, we had a press conference at Monroe Community College. The commitments that we made to build partnerships with our college partners are really coming to fruition. You will see that supported in the upcoming budget process, because the plan is to open at least two early college high schools in September. And again, there will be other partnerships that we have merged with our middle college program, which Bryan and Stratton is, which provides direct instruction for a lot of our young people, working with our district staff for young people, and really exposing students as early as grade seven to the possibilities of going to college and being successful in college. And that is clearly one of our goals. That is my report.
Thank you. Any questions?
Yes, I have a question. Dr. Rivera, what is the benefit of national recognition for the district?
Well, we basically have teachers who have committed years of their lives to really becoming experts in the field, being very knowledgeable about their subject matter, being expert in pedagogy, and having demonstrated that through very rigorous observations. To become a National Board certified teacher, it is an incredibly rigorous process. What it is, it's basically a certification is you are one of the best teachers in the country. And so it's an incentive for our people to participate. We recognize them through our contract with our union partner. I believe there is a small differential that accompanies that. But it's a great national incentive for our staff to participate in.
Do they leave us after they get this national recognition?
I don't know those exact stats. I do know that many of the, I would say, yeah, no.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any others? None?
The only...
Yes, Commissioner Thompson?
The only piece I would tag on to that is we received, if I'm not mistaken, material within the past several months. It might have been from Dr. Obansky on nationally board certified teachers. And I think the questions, some of the questions we need to ask are what difference we are seeing in the students with whom they work, how they compare with their counterparts, so that we can try to make a correlation between that certification and student performance.
Since there are no other questions, then we'll move on to board reports. And we'll start with Mr. Evans' report.
On Wednesday, January 17th, the Student Leadership Congress continued with their Big Brother, Big Sister initiative, along with the REACH program at School number 22. School 22 students received firsthand experience in the television studio while watching the filming of the district's weekly news show, Students First. Along with our little brothers and little sisters, we assigned roles for our public service announcements, which are focusing on bullying. Our next meeting will be on February 5th, Monday night, at 5:00 here at Central Office, and we'll be finalizing our scripts and performing run-throughs with the district studio crew. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Evans. With committee reports, starting with Commissioner Brennan?
Well, the Policy Committee has not met since December 18th, but it has been busy, as we all know. Yes, have other people, and that's a good thing. And as was indicated by some of the earlier speakers, the policy that people have been discussing tonight, out of a very extensive discussion that began a year ago, where the input of administration was actively solicited and where a gulf that seemed unbridgeable even a couple of weeks ago has been spanned, I think is a good thing for all of you, and it's to your credit and to the credit of everybody that's participated in this discussion. We should never have let this become a discussion or an issue, where we saw this, saw ourselves as adversaries, where we saw this as a matter of winners and losers. This entire discussion of trying to improve the eligibility policy, trying to make it more effective, it should be a win-win proposition. It should be a shared search for the best approach we could come up with for kids. And sometimes that's messy, and sometimes it's robust and vigorous, and sometimes people take offense. I'm sorry about that. I always reserve the right, when I think someone is misrepresenting my work, to set the record straight, and I would grant that to you as well. And I'm not insulted by it, and I hope you wouldn't be. But I think we're moving in a positive direction. And when the motion is actually made to substitute the policy, the proposed policy change for the regulations that Dr. Rivera has heroically put together over the course of the last week, I think that we'll be moving in a positive direction.
Are you finished?
Yes.
Commissioner Brennan?
It's the longest report you ever got for a committee that didn't meet.
Commissioner Elliott?
The Board Governance Committee will have its first meeting on January 22nd at 6:30. We have a full agenda. The agenda items include board restructuring, board staff restructuring, the status of the Personnel Committee, and probably a couple of other things that escapes me at the moment. But that meeting is scheduled for January 22nd at 6:30.
Thank you. Commissioner Evans?
Two brief reports. The Superintendent Search Committee, as everyone knows, we held two community forums at East High and Wilson Magnet. Thanks for all those who have attended. To date, we have had over 1,300 surveys completed. Very importantly, the survey deadline is tomorrow, January 19th. So anyone that has not completed the survey, please go online and complete those. And anyone that has a paper survey in their hand, please get that survey returned as soon as possible. At the end of the month, we will receive the survey results and expect to review the draft description. We anticipate that advertising for the position will begin in February, and we'll discuss all this at our next meeting, which will be scheduled in the next couple of weeks. The Community Intergovernmental Relations Committee met January 16th to review the contract with Kevin Cleary LLC, which is Resolution 496 in your packet. Kevin will be working to support the board's legislative agenda during this budget season in Albany. He will be working closely with our Chief of Intergovernmental Relations and Special Project Rick Hannan, as well as with the Community Intergovernmental Relations. We will meet again on February 13th to get our quarterly update from the Parent Partnership Council. That concludes my two reports.
Thank you. Commissioner Power?
Yes, the Finance Committee met on Wednesday, January 10th, and reviewed the December financial reports, the available funds report, and the analysis. And we would like to advance the available funds report only to the board for its approval. If I could move that?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Thank you.
Commissioner Evans is second. All in favor? Please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Okay.
Mr. Evans?
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay. Also before you, but not discussed during the Finance Committee, is the Student Activity Funds Report that's compiled by the supervising account for the district. If I could move that?
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Evans?
Aye.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
In addition to that, we had several recommendations that came through the Finance Committee, including Resolutions 479 through 486. And you can take those with the rest of the packet. The next meeting is scheduled, our next regularly scheduled meeting is Thursday, February 8th. However, we are still trying to schedule several special Finance Committee meetings to address some nonrecurring issues. And we're trying to get the calendars together for that, so to be determined. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Commissioner Power. Now, Commissioner Thompson?
The Quality Assurance Committee has not been convened in its first meeting, full meeting, this year. I anticipate that we will keep to our usual meeting schedule of the second Monday of each month. But if I'm not mistaken, February 12th might be a day when schools are closed. Would the clerk happen to know whether or not Monday, February 12th?
The 19th. The 19th.
Okay. So it's likely that we will convene on Monday, February 12th. While there's no report, I would just like to say that I anticipate one of the agenda items at the first QA meeting being a review of the mission and scope of the committee. We began that discussion last year, and now that we are reconvened with the full committee, I'd like to revisit that discussion. A couple of the resolutions that we'll be acting on tonight are examples of the kinds of resolutions that I believe should come before QA. Resolution number 493, which is with the Performance Learning Systems that will be doing work with our teachers and school-based planning teams and mentors. And the Resolution number 494, they're on the, they're in the packet to be approved. And I have no objection to that tonight, but that's the type of resolution that I think the board would want vetted by the QA committee. And so that's the kind of discussion we'll have in our first meeting. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Commissioner White?
Yes, while I have met with the Auditor General in a lunch meeting, we have not yet set up a committee meeting for the Audit Committee yet. I expect to do that within the next month or so.
Thank you. We'll, I'll entertain, well, we already voted on the Student Activities Report, right? Okay. And I entertain motions to approve Resolutions 459 through 478.
So moved?
Second?
Moved and second, 459 through 478.
Oh, we're at resolutions now.
Yes.
Can I just ask one question? The packet that we have got on Friday is the same note. Nothing has been pulled or anything from what we received on Friday. Additional, okay. Thank you.
All in favor of 459 through 478, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
471, no. Let's be quick. 472, no. 473, no. Question there, I don't understand why we're paying this kind of money to a secretary. So my vote is no on 473. If somebody wants to get back to me with that kind of money for a secretary, that disturbs me. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll entertain motions to, the resolutions passed right away. I'll entertain motions to approve Resolution 479 through 484.
So moved?
Just one question, President Garcia, on 484?
A second.
Yeah, there...
Hold on a second.
Sure.
Second.
Go ahead.
There's a discrepancy in the number on 484. In the second paragraph, it gives us an amount of $7,458. But in the last paragraph, under the resolved statement, it's $8,000. What number are we approving? Are you requesting approval for?
This is a request for a final payment. The difference between the two numbers is, one is the quantifies how much would the change order was for, which is the $7,000. The actual outstanding balance due to the vendor is the $8,000. So that's what we're asking.
Okay, I guess I'm a little, I'm not getting that.
The change order was $7,450. That's what the change order was. But the total amount, when it's all reconciled, the final payment is $8,435. So we still owed, in addition to the change order, we still owed another $1,000, approximately $1,000. The payment is different from the change order.
Okay, why would the change order, maybe that's a question I have to ask later?
I'll give you a brief tutorial.
I would think it would be consistent.
A very brief tutorial, if I might, President Garcia, is this. That typically for our construction projects, we hold back 5% of the contract. With some exceptions, there's some variability based on the way the contracts are crafted. But in general, we hold back 5% in contingency anyway. So there'll always be a final payment resolution before us, regardless of how big or small that contract is.
So should there have not been a change order for the $1,000 also?
No, that just shows the difference between what's been paid out on the original contract. They obviously did not pay out the entire contract. They held in contingency some amount of that original contract.
Yeah, I'm clear on that, but this is new to me, so I could be totally off. But I just assumed that if I'm seeing a change order in a certain amount, that that change order would not, the amount that we would be paying would not exceed the change order. So that's why I'm having some confusion.
Yes. Why don't we, yes, go ahead, Dr. Rivera.
John, why don't you have an explanation that might help?
Mr. Case is also on the back, too.
Dr. Rivera, besides, who answers a question?
I actually thought it was a mistake, but...
It's the same format as throughout all of the resolutions.
But the other ones, with the other resolutions, they come, the ask price comes under the change order. And this one is different.
Go ahead, Mr. Coney.
Okay. Well, there's no real relationship between the actual final payment requests and the total value of all the change orders.
Okay.
The final payment is a function of the total contract price, which includes the initial contract price and the sum total of all the other change orders added to that. So there's no real true relationship between...
Then why do we need to know the change order?
Because I just think, well, to find it, I mean, the actual contract comes to the board. So if you look at this particular issue...
That probably is not a good question for me to ask, but...
$161,000 in contracts came to the board for your approval.
Right.
Subsequent to that, and as the project progressed, change orders in the amount of $7,400 were added to the actual contract. Those amount, that amount did not come to the board. This is to notify the board that in addition to what you had previously approved of $161,000, another $7,500 came through. And now we're asking for a final payment of $8,000.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Any other questions? None? Commissioner, Mr. Evans, how do you vote?
Aye.
Everyone else, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Guys have it. We are now going to, and I'll entertain a motion on Resolutions four eighty-five and four eighty-six. Those are the technology resolutions. Someone move, please?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Thank you. Four eighty-five and four eighty-six, any questions?
For four eighty-six, just the, the differences to the, to some of the work that's done, for example, Franklin Educational Campus goes from thirty-seven thousand to a hundred and three thousand. Can I get some explanation?
Mr. Rivera?
Here.
Jim, Coney, Mr. Coney will give you details on that, I do not have the details.
The column on the right, on the left-hand side, is what we originally put in the budget for these particular projects. And then as we got into the project and actually designed them, the scope changed in terms of what we actually wanted to accomplish. And in partic, in this particular project, we had roughly a million dollars in the overall budget. So what we did is we went back, we bid this project, came in over budget, came back, took out several schools, and then we adjusted what we had in the scope on certain schools, rebid the project. And what you see on the right-hand side is what they actually came in on, the actual budget for those particular schools. The schools that show zero, they were actually put into the next phase. So we rolled it, took them out of that particular phase, and then put them into, I think, this was actually Phase Three of this security enhancement district-wide. And because we couldn't afford all of them in Phase One, and what we had to do in the particular schools, we rolled those particular schools into Phase Four, and those were accomplished this past summer.
Okay.
Yes, go ahead, Mr. Coney.
You know, one additional comment, because you'll be getting some of these at least next month and maybe the month of March. When the budgets are done, the budgets are done sometimes two or three, four years in advance. So when you look at the first column on your left, compare that to the column on your right, it could be a two or three-year time period in between those two events.
Thank you. Commissioner Evans?
I, I just wanted to highlight the importance of Resolution four eighty-five with Upstate Work Comp, Inc. As I put on my business hat, the amount of money that we expend in workers' compensation on a yearly basis is absolutely ridiculous. And this resolution could seek to save the District millions of dollars. So I'm, I'm looking forward to getting periodic, hearing periodic updates at the Finance Committee on what we're doing to keep our worker, worker compensation plan, worker compensation claims in check.
Just to add to that, the Upstate Work Comp resolution consumed a fair amount of our time at the last Finance Committee meeting, and Jim Coney and his team worked very hard to satisfy my increased demands in terms of justifying the, the contract. And so I was very pleased with the effort and also the results. It wasn't just, it wasn't just a slap-together job, it was a carefully executed justification for the work effort.
How do you vote, Mr. Evans?
Aye.
Everyone else, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. I'll entertain a motion to, to approve Resolution four eighty-seven through four ninety-seven.
So moved. I would just, if we could separate the four ninety-seven, which is the, which is related to the athletic eligibility policy.
Yes. Four eighty-seven through four eighty-nine, please. I'll entertain a motion for four eighty-seven through four eighty-nine.
Four, oh, yeah. You mean through four ninety-six?
Four ninety-six.
I mean, I'm, I'm sorry.
Yeah, forty-seven to four ninety-six.
You just went to extract the ninety-seven.
Yeah.
Four eighty-seven through four ninety-six. I'll entertain a motion to approve four eighty-seven through four ninety-six. Is there a second?
Second.
That's about the third time, right? Any questions?
Yes, Mr. President, I just wanted to note with the President's approval that I appreciated the, I submitted these questions to the Superintendent's staff and to Linda, and I wanted to indicate that they did an admirable job in responding to my questions. I got the information that I needed, and I think Ms. Dice Fawcett was instrumental in making my, answering my questions as well as Linda. So I just wanted to take this time to thank them for their good work. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
On their behalf as well. Any other questions? None? Mr. Evans, how do you vote?
Aye.
Everybody else, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Four ninety-three, four ninety-four, four ninety-five, four ninety-six. No.
Thank you. I'll entertain a motion to approve Resolution four ninety-seven.
So moved.
It's been moved, then?
Second.
Second. Thank you. Discussion for, on the, for Resolution four ninety-seven. Any discussion?
One point of clarification is that.
Point of clarification, Mr. Brennan.
It's the regulation. Okay. The policy?
Yeah.
Okay.
Four ninety-seven, of course, are the regulations submitted by Mr. Brennan, the Commissioner Brennan and his committee and the Superintendent. Instead, the policy, eligibility policy doesn't change. Instead, we're approving regulations that will be dictated by the Superintendent of Schools, and whatever changes he wants to make in the future to those regulations, he is free to do so. Any questions, Commissioner Evans?
The only thing I would say is that I, I think that the regulations, first off, let me say that I would never support, my parents would come up here if they knew that I was ever going to support lower standards, except not the way I was raised, so I would not, I don't support lower standards, and I think that these regulations maintain the, I wouldn't even say high standards, because a C average isn't, isn't a high standard, as Commissioner White said, but maintains the standards that we have in place, but more importantly, works to make sure that the mechanisms are in place to provide the needed support to our students. So I think we do that by keeping that policy, but at the same time, adopting the eligibility for extracurricular activities regulation, Regulation fifty-three oh five that are, and I'm pleased that, that Dr. Rivera and the committee was able to work together to, to advance these to the Board. I think it's proactive, and I think that's what this Board should be, proactive.
I think our student rep wants, no?
No, no, no one else, well, then we vote, yeah, Commissioner Power.
Because we do have a different audience than last month, I just want to state what I said last month, which was that when this policy, when the policy recommendation came out of the Policy Committee, I did not favor it, and I stated so at last month's meeting, primarily because I thought the changes that we were being asked did not have a place in Board policy, except as a vote of no confidence for the Superintendent and staff, that the changes that were being asked of us really belonged in regulation, and that, and I strenuously urged that they be dealt with as regulation, and if my position on that point helped to facilitate reconciliation, then I'm very glad for that.
Thank you. Commissioner Thompson?
I am, I know that we have the existing policy, and I've heard people speak to the merit of the policy. I don't completely agree that the current policy is as understandable as some say it is. I don't agree that it is as fair as some say it is. On the point of being understandable, that's not the only thing that makes a good policy, because there's the policy and then there's the practice. And in conversations I've had with people in the District, there are numerous examples of the inconsistent application of the policies that we have in place, so the practice has a lot to do with how a policy rolls out. One example of the practice of the run-around sheet, I've been told of cases where extreme pressure has been applied to those teachers who are asked to complete the run-around sheets, extreme pressure by the coaches, perhaps in some cases by the principals, in order to allow a student to participate on a team. So it's not enough to say that a policy is understandable, there's a lot to be said about how it is carried out. In terms of the policy being, the current policy being fair, I don't, I don't agree that it's completely fair. There appears to be discrepancies in terms of how the athletes are being treated and the standard they're being held to, and non-athletes. Having said all of that, which is that the current policy isn't ideal, I don't think the recommendate, the recommended changes are an improvement. And I won't go into every point with which I have an objection, but I'll, I'll just cover a couple. I don't think it's just a matter of providing additional academic support for the students in talking with principals and talking with other folks in the District. And, and I think that Commissioner Powell alluded to this the last time we discussed this policy. We're talking more about providing a social network, the need for a social network and relationships for these students. It is not just basketball, that is, or not being able to play a sport that's preventing the students from coming to school. There are other factors in, in that disconnect, and, and I don't see this policy providing those relationships. We, we, in the piece that Commissioner Brennan sent the Board, he talked, he cited the DNC article, and what it says is that, it suggests that some three hundred students before adjustment for students playing multiple sports, it suggests that three hundred students are ineligible. Well, we never get that adjusted figure, so we're not even sure what numbers we're talking about. So, so the conversation can't be that easily quantified, and I know we're talking about lives at stake, and every life is precious, but we haven't quantified the number of lives we're talking about. I think there's still too much ambiguity. I agree with the speaker who said, and perhaps I'm not understanding it fully, but I think that's another problem. I don't think we all have, I don't think we have a collective understanding of the current policy, or a collective understanding of what is being proposed, and for us to act as a body on this tonight, I think is premature. But I agree with one of the speakers who said that it appears that someone might be able to, to not maintain a C average indefinitely. And so perhaps some of the discussions and the additional work that's going to be, that will be performed following tonight's vote will address some of those concerns, but my preference would be to defer this vote. We heard athletic director after athletic director say that they had not been consulted. It's fine to say that they'll be worked with after tonight, but the fact that they were not consulted, the fact that prior to the last meeting, the Student Leadership Congress had not been consulted, and they have weighed in as not supporting this, I'm not comfortable, and I do feel this is premature, and I'm sorry that, and I understand the urgency, and I'm right with you in wanting to help students, but I think this is premature.
Thank you. Anyone else? I'm going to make this a roll call.
Excuse me. I did.
Oh.
I want to just address a couple of things, just briefly. Having listened to everybody and having worked on this issue over the course of the past year, I wanted to just make a couple of things clear, thank you. First of all, surely I really, I do appreciate, you know, I think it's same church, different pew, and we might differ maybe about the pace at which we need to move, but I think a lot of your criticisms actually are pretty incisive, and I think there will be opportunities, and I hope there will be, to incorporate them, not only, not only by working directly with you, but through your committee. And I'll certainly work with you to try to do that. I think that, I mean, there were a number of things that were said here tonight, and the first thing that, that I want to say is that to those who have, who have been in the trenches and doing the work and experienced success with the current policy, I want to say that I honor that, and I appreciate that. And I know that those successes were hard-won, and they're, they're a consequence of your effort under this policy, and it's, it's human enough to, to, to go with the devil you know when you're talking about this complicated a subject. And I want to make that absolutely clear. This policy, our concerns about the dropout rate, our concerns, and I don't know how we can have, how anybody can examine the dropout rate that we have and say that the current approach is satisfactory. Surely is absolutely right that, that ineligibility is not the sole cause of dropping out, but I don't think an argument against doing something that accomplishes some good, I don't think a valid argument is to say that because it doesn't solve everything, it shouldn't be done. It was said that there was mandatory study hall under the existing arrangement. The difficulty with that is the study hall frequently does not provide subject-specific assistance, and that's something that we tried to address. It's been said that this policy never deals with eligibility, with ineligibility. The fact is, you have a prospect of being ineligible every week, under the monitoring contemplated by this proposal and by the regulations, and whether it's a run-around sheet or done electronically, as long as it's done within a week. If you don't keep your nose clean, if you don't go to the tutoring, if you don't go to your classes, knowing that all of the adults in, in that school are monitoring that, you don't play. That's a pretty strong incentive. It's, it's what I would call real-time ineligibility, as opposed to the approach of saying to someone, you fall behind, you face long-term ineligibility, we can't really help you with the kind of subject-specific tutoring or, or other help that you need. We're essentially saying unconsciously perhaps, go drop out, and that's reflected in what we see. And that is not satisfactory. And this, this effort was never intended to discredit the contributions of the people who have done work under the current policy, but what we are doing isn't working, not, not to a satisfactory degree. We're, we're pushing people to simply drop out and become the police chief problem, as he explained to me when he, when he discussed that with us, at a, at a forum that Van hosted on December twentieth. I was puzzled by the, the assertion that, of one of the gentlemen who spoke, who said that he first became aware of this proposal when it was a public matter at the last Board meeting. This has been, as has already been referenced, an issue that's been in the public domain for most of the year. There have been op-ed pieces and editorials in the Democrat and Chronicle saying, we aren't moving fast enough. And on three separate occasions, while the Policy Committee undertook to ascertain what the administration's misgivings were, we actually canceled Policy Committee meetings to give them additional time to make known to us what their alternatives were. So I don't think it can be said that we did not seek input, I don't think it can be said that we are rushing this issue. And I hope, I do hope that we can have, we can have more quality input subsequent to that. Under the regulations, the Superintendent has a great deal of latitude, as everybody knows. I trust him, I think that's a good thing. But I think we're moving in the right direction here, and I think that we have to be concerned, not just about the people who don't need the extra help, the high GPAs, which are commendable of, of, of the team at Marshall that we just saw at the last meeting, that, that's wonderful. But I don't think we discredit that achievement by saying that we need to think a little more about those who don't have the supports, who have a greater difficulty, who are more prone to dropping out. We lose a student at that point in his life, sophomore, junior, senior in high school, sixteen-year-old, you know, seventeen-year-old about to drop out of school, and if we don't intervene, if the adults in the school do not intervene and work as a team and set aside their bureaucratic and turf considerations and work together to try to help that youngster, and that student drops out, we've lost them. Now, I know that bothers everyone, every one of you here, it certainly bothers me, and it's been that concern that has, that has motivated my actions, and I welcome this compromise, and again, I want to thank the Superintendent in particular for his, for his long-suffering patience and, and the leadership he's shown in bringing the best out of all of the proposals that have been offered, and I think we can continue to move in a positive direction if we follow that model.
Mr. Evans?
We talked a lot about tonight, about dis servicing the students who cannot play. We're saying they cannot play because they don't have the grades. What about, we have to also think about the kids that are playing, that are borderline, that are, they're playing because, in a sense, there's not enough skill on the team, so they're getting star power by being able to play. By doing this, we're bringing kids who, in a sense, are not meeting standards in, which have more skill. have more skill. But we are also taking these kids that are borderline and they're sitting on a bench. Now, from my understanding, scouts come to see kids play on the court, on the field, anywhere. They will not be seeing them if they're sitting on a bench. How are they going to get the recognition if, by meeting standards, if they're not being played? In a sense, they're going to see that since they're not playing, they're not being recognized for what they're doing, in a sense, they're going to give up. So let's look at, they may be dropping out because they can't play. It's also the other side of the coin. They're going to drop out because they can't play on a team, because they're someone better than them.
Thank you, Mr. Evans. We're going to do a roll call voting, starting precisely with Mr. Evans.
I'm gonna vote no.
Commissioner Brennan?
Yes.
Commissioner Elliott?
Yes.
Commissioner Evans?
Yes.
Commissioner Power?
Yes.
Commissioner Thompson?
I vote no.
Commissioner White?
Yes.
And I vote yes. So the ayes have it, five to two, plus Mr. Evans.
Six to one.
I mean, six.
Six to one.
Six to one, yes, plus Mr. Evans.
You may count my vote as two if you choose.
Which one of us got zeroed out?
This, this finishes the, the consideration of resolutions and we'll move on then to unfinished business. We have none, new business.
Yes, President Garcia.
I recognize Commissioner White.
Thank you, President Garcia.
You're welcome.
Very, very briefly, I submitted to the clerk a written resolution that would, among other things, require city school district staff to work cooperatively and jointly with the city of Rochester on what has been called a truancy abatement program. Additionally, among other things, that written resolution would require the minimum attendance rate to go from 93% to 95%. It's interesting, we're talking about that today, but that is another recommendation that is made in this written resolution. That resolution has been forwarded to the clerk and has been distributed to my colleagues as well. After discussions with Commissioner Thompson, Garcia, Powell, and Brennan, I initially had thought that the resolution should go to Quality Assurances. I thought better of it, that it should perhaps go to the Committee of Intergovernmental Relations. Consequently, at this time, I am making a motion that my written resolution, which is nothing more than a written motion, be sent to the Committee of Intergovernmental Relations with the only requirement that the committee report back to this body on February 15th, 2007. I'm not saying that the committee has to consider that proposal and it's bound by the words or the facts as described in the resolution. I'm only asking that the committee consider the written resolution and that it bring back some report to this body by February 15th. And the reason why I'm doing that is I would hate to see another resolution or another idea linger for a year, good or bad. I think we have to deal with the issue. And, and I presented some facts that suggest what the issue is, and I'm hoping that the committee will consider those issues and facts and report back to this body on the 15th. So that is my motion, Mr. President.
Second. It's been moved on second. Under discussion.
President Garcia, the question I have is, I, I, I don't understand why it's only going to the Intergovernmental Relations and perhaps I don't understand why it's going to the Intergovernmental Relations and why it's not also coming to QA. And the reason I use, I make both of those first statements is because I understand the collaboration between the city of Rochester and the school district. But with the kinds of issues that we discuss in QA, my concern that, that is not also an item for discussion in QA.
Well, no one is saying that it's not. Commissioner Elliott, we, right now, the recommendation is to send it to the Intergovernmental Relations Committee because it's talking about a collaboration between the school district and the city. However, as I read the document that Commissioner White passed around, that resolution has staffing and budget implications as well. So it will go to finance and it may end up going to Quality Assurance as well.
Thank you.
Right now, you know, the only thing that I'm a little concerned about is, is the, in, in the motion is the February 15 date. You know, I, I, I don't think that's enough time for the committee to consider the broad aspects of this resolution. Commissioner Thompson?
I appreciate Commissioner Elliott's concern about QA being cut out, but I agree with President Garcia that there, this is a multifaceted suggestion or resolution and it would be appropriate, in my opinion, I agree, to make its way to QA for some discussion. And the concern that I also, the concern I expressed with Commissioner White, I believe he has addressed, if, if we understand what you've just said, that this is not a resolution that is a directive that community and Intergovernmental Relations will, will come back with a specific recommendation tied to the words of the initial document we received from Commissioner White, which directed the district to do certain things. My understanding is that the committee will have the latitude to discuss and come back with whatever report or recommendation they deem appropriate. And so I can support that. And I do believe that February 15th is a bit of a stretch.
Mr. President, if I could address this body.
Commissioner White?
Thank you. First, with respect to this notion that this resolution is written. I, I wanted to do that so that the committee, where this ended up, would have a specific notion with respect to my concerns, which actually are the concerns of a number of people in this community. Having said that, however, I was very much open to where this particular resolution should go. Commissioner Elliott, it was my first inclination to send it to Q and A, but, and we did not have a chance to speak offline, but in speaking to a number of people about this, it seemed to make sense that, since we were in fact talking about whether the city is cooperating with the district, and, and in short, whether the right hand knew what the left hand was doing, that this is an appropriate issue. And, and to be quite honest, as lengthy as the written resolution was, it really didn't get into all the facts about how we ended up where we're at in terms of this truancy abatement strategy that seems to have gone in different paths. So I am a part of that committee. I think you chair that committee, do you not? No, which? No, 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 not Quality Assurances, but Committee of Intergovernmental Relations, is that yours, Malik? But obviously, you have the invitation to attend any of these meetings, and I hope you do, because I'm going to be having debate about it at both the meetings. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, it's my committee. I guess I should comment on it. I'm not looking for any more work. We've got enough work in the community of government relations. But.
And you're it.
I, I guess I, I would say that we, we could take this up at our, at our February 13th meeting, but being that this is something that the board wants to add to our agenda, maybe, we may want to look at moving the February 13th meeting up so that we can come back with what we digested in, in the meeting. But I, I would just add that all board members are invited to the Community and Intergovernmental Relations Committee meeting. And I, and I think the first step, at first read of this is really working, is seeing how we would engage the city in, in this, in this entire process. And also the fiscal implications are, are something I will be very, very interested in hearing more about and, and also hearing currently what we have in place in terms of truancy at the district. So we may want to invite administrators to come to that CIGR meeting to let us know what they're doing currently in terms of collaboration with the city in terms of truancy.
I'll, go ahead.
Just, just one point of, of information that I've heard. I do know that there's been some discussion there with, with teachers who've said that the issue may be truancy as opposed to the curfew, that the, that it may not be cost-efficient or the, the curfew itself may not be effective, but that the, we should look at the issue of truancy. So, so I'm looking forward to having this discussion.
Now, just so that you know, if we vote yes on this resolution, we are agreeing to the February 15th date. So I'm gonna move to a vote. All, all in favor, please say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Mr. Evans?
Aye.
The ayes have it, so you're required to report by February 15th.
I've not seen you so unhand, Commissioner Evans.
This, this concludes our agenda items for, for this meeting. We are now going to listen to speakers on other than agenda items. So we have a list of speakers. If you give me a second here, I'll get it right out. First speaker on the list is Mr. Kerry Coleman. You have three minutes like previous speakers, and when you hear that bell rings, please conclude your remarks. Mr. Coleman is not in. Bishop Willie Davis. Bishop Davis?
Dear the Board of Commissioners, my name is Bishop Willie Davis. I'm pastor of Marinata Missionary Baptist Church at 121 Bryberry Park in the city of Rochester, also representing the faith community alliance, United Church Ministries, Baptist Ministries, Alliance of Great Rochester, as well as the Great Lakes Baptist Association, which spans the region from Rochester to Niagara Falls. I come tonight to address a number of issues which I know I'm not going to really have adequate time to address, but nonetheless, two issues that are above most concern to us. One is the alleged racial discrimination practices that is currently being advanced in the city school district. This is very alarming to us. Now, as I come here today, I look at our commissioners and one of the accomplishments that we have made is that we have more than adequate representation of minorities on our Board of Commissioners now. It is my sincerest hope that the concerns and issues that have been brought to the fore by current and former district employees are not ignored, but are rather addressed in a meaningful and very respectful way. And that in some way or the other, that this district tries to seek a win-win situation for all that are involved. I don't need to necessarily get into a definition of what racial discrimination is, is about, how it is in these days and times very subtle in its existence symptomatically and institutionally wise. But I, it, 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 it challenges, it challenges us to, to look at what we're doing here. When we have people, some of the documents that I've seen that have emanated from various processes where there were considerations and discussions about these issues, I am, I am really just appalled to know that people have been in essence demoted and degraded, made to feel that their, their aptitude in the classroom or administratively was not what it should be. When I happen to personally know that many of those individuals in working with them over the years in the district, that they perform at exceptionally high levels. It really, really concerns me. And I, I am coming here not to, to, to make any further allegations. I'm coming here putting my confidence in you all to do what is right. Last thing that I want to say, which will be brief, is I'm overly concerned as well with the academic failure of students in our district. We have an overabundance of resources, yet we still have poor academic achievement levels. We have escalating high school dropouts. We have violence. We have high suspension rates. I mean, a whole multiplicity of issues. I'm asking this committee, and I will submit a formal letter of recommendations coming from all of the groups that I mentioned at the beginning of my dialogue with you, some recommendations as, for your consideration, so that we can bring about help and healing in this community because it's not here now.
Thank you. Reverend Raymond Graves?
I hope to be as clear, because he has colored much of what I will say in the beginning. And I think he's set the stage for what I want to say to Dr. Vera, members of the board, and thank you for this opportunity to speak at this time of behalf of those who have come to us.[1532.91]